What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we are with Timothy Freeze and Vincent Lam. Vince played a $200 tournament and took it down. We're gonna review the hows and the whens and everything. Let's get started.
Alright, it's night off suit.
The house and the wends. But not the wise. Uh, 200 big ones deep. 9pm guys, just so you know.
How are you guys uh figuring out what to do 200 big ones deep, what goes into your thought process here?
Uh, I'm generally, I can do both actions bet and check. Uh, when I do bet here because it's we're 200 bigs, uh, I don't use the 33% sizing. Uh, we have a nine which is like pretty good. Uh, if I had ace eight or pocket nines, I would go like 115% pot. Uh, so here I think probably betting like three big blinds is pretty good.
So you're gonna like have a 115% pot range, like 50% pot range. Um, I think when we're 200 big ones deep, having a lot of aces diamonds in our bet range is really good. Uh, with the pocket that's huge, we want to have big flushes. So you went, you did go through.
Clearly on autopilot here.
You get called, you have an ace on the turn, uh, do, do barrel this?
Uh, yes, I would barrel and uh, I would generally choose a really big size. Uh, whether or not I had an ace is irrelevant for 200 bigs deep. I mean, obviously it's nice to have an ace. Uh, I think in general, I would go like between like 85 to 115%.
66%?
Alright, 66.
Seems fine. We're just looking at a bunch of sims where we do a lot of like bet 50 and bet 80 in the spot, so it seems fine. Three of spades, is it too greedy? We go for the half pot? Get a little entitlement call, you beat some bad aces, not that many of them, ace deuce, ace four, ace six, that's it.
The problem is almost every worse ace now has paired.
Exactly.
And every other.
And we get fold. So he's probably staying there, he could do have some kind of combo draw, he could have some kind of, yeah, some kind of weak pair. Ace five oh in the big blind, he checks.
Uh, I think generally we can check, we can raise. Um, when we're, when we're like super deep, I don't like to play big pots blind versus blind. In general, I just like to see flops.
I think there's a little bit of a like split between small blind and big blind. I think big blind is allowed to raise a lot here. Uh, cause you're gonna be in position the whole hand. I think small blind has to be a lot more careful.
Yeah, 100% agree. Like if we look at a chart, this is probably like 9% raise.
I think you want to raise a lot with a six, seven, eight, nine. And the wheelie ones check a lot more.
Yeah.
But it might get there some still.
I don't have 200 big blind charts, do I?
I know, I really want Wiz to make a deeper stack.
He chose to.
Yeah.
Takes a long time.
I've got, I've got him, I've got nine handed.
Is that cash?
Oh.
Nope, MTT, MTT nine handed.
Oh right, it has pre huh?
Exactly. Okay, so it's not mandatory, it's kind of mandatory to raise once you have ace eight off or better most of the time. Ace three suited or better suited eight suited nines and better offsuit or suited connectors and suited gappers.
And the suited ace, I don't know if you said that.
Yeah, yeah.
So this one's.
Oh, perfect. So basically I accidentally played it right, so that's great.
Right. Uh, we go for a check.
Yeah, I think checking is fine.
Check or bet is fine, I think.
Yeah, I think if you betting small would be fine after checking flop, I don't really want to, I don't really want to bet this turn.
Yeah, I'm trying to go down now.
Yeah.
It's like on the flop, we have backdoor straight backdoor flush, on the turn we don't.
And then I think uh.
Dogs for big for like 8%.
He has no blush.
What is that like? A 10 that just thinks it's good now based on how the turn played?
A king sometimes. I don't think he has a lot of six, six five got there, but I don't think he has lots of five. I may, maybe could, he called one big blind.
Seven, four, three, four.
I think it was fine. I think against people who small blind limbs are unprotected, I think I want to raise more than something. Uh, we defend pocket sixes, we flop the world.
So I, in general, I think I'm just going to call here. Um, it's too thin to raise for, for value. Like it's hard for him to have a 10 uh at this.
It is hard for him to have a 10.
I'm always raising.
I mean, in theory, he's supposed to call you with all kinds of like queen jack.
Yeah, he's supposed to. And if I remember correctly, this player on the button is like extremely wide.
Yeah.
So like he could, he could have like anything here.
Let him pick up a piece.
Yeah.
Queen of hearts, we hope that he found a piece of it. Is this where you make your move?
Uh, I think so because the queen is good for his range.
Now you're facing.
And I think that he can't really fold the queen. And definitely can't fold a 10, so.
Right, yeah, never folding a 10. I'm not folding a queen against you there. Uh, do you guys want to see this at 100 big blinds?
I like the uh, I like the raise more because I have a, I have a six of hearts.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how, how would that work out?
My only question on these sizes, don't we want to price him in on all of his straight draws and flush draws?
You gotta go.
What do you mean? Look how deep.
I thought this was kind of, I think this is pretty small for how deep they are.
Yeah, I thought it was small too.
Okay, given how deep there.
I was gonna say like, I mean, I could imagine building a, like a strategy to go to like 20 here.
Yeah, so this is me trying to price in his draws.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's possible, okay.
Cause he should have a lot of implied odds too. If he's sitting here with like king jack or clubs, like no way he's folding.
Half pot, half pot, he's probably deep brown on a side like a fish.
Yeah.
Alright. Ace four oh and small blind, we go for the raise. Uh, we get the fold. Let's see the 200 big line deep small by strategy. It is incredibly cautious. If you think your opponent's playing well, your opponent might not be playing well. But uh, the same can go for it for sure. Makes sense this raise.
Sure. Um, uh, in general, there's like, because uh, I think like I said before, the deep stacked blind versus blind, there's just a lot of limping. And a lot of same flops. Um. My strategy is the, like the inverse of that, I just, I raise a lot in the small blind.
I'm raising this one pure when they.
I was about to say, this, this one, like deuce X, it's the, I always remember it's the offsuit connectors check a lot. The offsuit gappers bet a lot somehow.
This is just such garbage, I'm never limping this. I'm never overcompensating for completing, I'm just always raising this.
Yeah, yeah, silver, silver goes for it sometimes, some deuce X, a lot of real trashy stuff, but.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not raising enough in the big blind versus limps just cause like, I think playing in position is just so much better. Uh, the e, the EV of like of getting value on the streets is just much higher than raising and him folding.
Yeah, I mean, you're capable.
No, but you understand why you ISO hands like this, right? Is to fold out, it's dominating you. No, it's because you want to really fold out jack four, queen four, jack deuce, like stuff that can cooler you.
But at least.
And also like, you want to be able to raise for value, like if I realize that you're raising, you know, like ace ten suited and pocket nines here, then you know, I'm gonna stop giving you action.
I mean, most people that ever lent this aren't gonna be capable like Vince that could actually find ways to bluff and still steal a post flop. So I mean, I give him a little credit there, but yeah, I think it's just way better to raise pre flop, get it over with.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree.
Check, check, flop, but also like raising it pre flop and taking it's not bad. Like if you went two big blinds with this hand, I, I don't, I'm not scoffing at that, like, I would like to make 200 big blinds for 100.
Yeah, when they check, I bet here a lot exploitively, just to bet, I'll bet like two big blinds and then check back every river.
Vince likes it. Little bit worried that we're up against some better showdown, some better.
He's gonna have a six, a 10.
Some weak sixes, yeah.
Yeah, like whatever.
We revert the babyish flush. Deliver the babyish flush in the world and we lose to a better four with a better club. Yeah, that's good. I think you could just save yourself a couple bucks there.
And that's exactly the raise pre flop.
Yeah, actually.
Yeah, that was the.
So, yeah.
Because most of these people are face up in a small blind too. They raise when they have something good and they limp all their junk. I mean, there's obviously good players that are polarized, but most of the recs just don't play that way. It was just super linear.
Queen nine oh, a lot of this offsuit stuff can go for occasional raises, just find it sometimes, don't have to find it every time. Um, this board.
Hmm, if he checks, I'm checking a lot here like uh, I believe a king, uh, if he has a king, it's supposed to check like almost pure.
Right, um, and your range is pretty brutally capped from checking back free flop, so.
Yeah.
So we're going to try and get our queen high to showdown. Uh, in theory, you might hear that, but.
I'm not, not super interested in bluff catching here. So this is one of the spots that sometimes I three bets.
I think it's not like a sometimes you three bet, it's like mandatory.
But for what it's worth, the queen high, like I'm checking it down because I think I have showdown value, so I'm inclined to bluff catch a lot there.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, this, this is kind of mandatory.
Yeah. When I say sometimes, I mean, uh, probably a lot. I don't know why it just flat is here though. So just fold now.
Don't think anything you can do here.
And raise. Uh, I think easy call.
Yeah, what's your four betting strategy here? Just like, what's your worst pair that you're four betting?
The worst pair that I'm four betting?
Yeah.
Probably like jacks.
Jacks, maybe tens. What's, what are your, like, you have some like suited aces, suited king bluffs, like where are those coming from?
Uh, probably king four suited, king five suited, king six, king seven, sometimes.
I think like king nine, king eight.
Ace two, no, not ace two, like ace four, ace five, ace.
There you go.
Yeah, you were, you were basically in the right range. This one, this one's pretty clear call. Um, you can bluff with some more stuff, a little bit of.
Ah, I like how he said.
The four most sizing too.
You know, six and then it's like just whatever.
That's a, that's a thing, 200 bigs, big deep uh, four bets are big.
Wow, four X and.
Alright, so we call, we don't flop much.
Three X.
Bet. Yeah, I have three X in position, four X out of position.
He went to 40, he raised the 10.
From 13.
Uh, in the solver.
The solver size was 13.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, yeah, 13. So it's almost exactly true, it's exactly true. Uh, yeah, against like half pot.
Yeah, I remember this hand, I think I was, I was taking it down, I was contemplating raising here. Uh, then I, I decided to fold.
I think if you wanted to find some raises, king five makes an attractive raise for having the wheel draw. Let this one go and.
I think, yeah, I was thinking like I can just turn this into a peer of love.
Yeah, 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 you're definitely bluffing if you want. Uh, suited, three ways. We go for the third pot, seem good.
Oh, I think I remember this as well.
Okay, I check that flop a lot.
So I think.
I think it's a little dangerous with, with like a.
I think, I think a lot of people are gonna roast me for this, but I just fold here.
Whoa.
Doesn't, he doesn't.
It's Ontario, it's probably fine.
Bro, you can't tell me you're doing that because I'm after you, I'm gonna come to Ontario, I'm gonna get in your games and I'm gonna.
They're gonna fall to a check raise, you should check flop probably.
I mean, this guy's nitty, this guy's nitty, aggression factor of one, he fought race of 11.
20 hands.
I just think like, people show up here, not with a well constructed blocking range, they don't show up with nine, seven of whatever. But they show up with pocket sixes, sometimes they think they're good, they show up with like an eight and they want to see if they're good, they want protection.
That's the thing, he made it so small, it might just be a worse eight.
Not flush draws, they have, they have four sometimes because they're afraid of the flush.
Yeah, I think they're insufficiently polarized and I think they draw their bluff in weird places, but I think they have too much like linear merge crap in their raising range. And that means, and you can continue against that. You're not excited about it, but like, you see this sometimes when you check a turn, when you check a turn, you're pretty happy.
Right, you can afford like put in six here and see what the turn brings. Sometimes you hit an eight.
Yeah.
And you're just glaring him. Sometimes he checks, like sometimes you just have an easy fold, right?
Yeah.
Given it can be good sometimes.
He's doing it into two players though. It's not like he just checked.
Yeah. He is. Yeah, I actually just had one live the other day where I had the boat on the paired board and um, I, I held on, I didn't fold or anything, but I had bottom boat. They both had over pairs and they put way too much money into the pot with, so it happens.
I also like, I have notes on probably like 80% of the Ontario high stakes population. It's, some of the things that you're gonna see is like, what the hell?
I mean, that guy's HUD stats, just in these 19 hands, his HUD stats are atrocious, so I get it. Okay.
And, and Tim, remember that um, when yours, that the people who put in too much money with, with their over pairs had us beat? In that hand.
I mean, that's true. Or like mid pairs as well though, you know.
Yeah.
Big, big multiple kinds of stuff. Alright, once again with the paired flop, we're going 33.
Hey, uh, I'm probably, yeah, so here's the spots where I'm going like over pot. Uh, king is good for our range, I'm expecting that uh, six is going to check raise a lot, just because it's a, it's a flush draw board. Um, and like some, some straight, uh, straight draws as well, so like a six is slightly vulnerable. Um, I'm basically gonna get a nine to fold, or if they call, then spike like an ace or a jack, check the river.
You have tons of equity, yeah.
I'd be surprised if you get to go over pot here. He's just got way more sixes than we do, even if, even if he's supposed to check raising.
Yeah, like I have, I have competing impulses, we did just study some turn barrels and it was, it is a lot of like 80s, the texture changes kind of a lot here, so that keeps you from hyper polarizing. But when you start off like 150, 200 effective, you need to find more bigger sizings. And so that pulls me the other way, that maybe I want to have some like 120s here on turn, so.
I just think he has more sixes and I think they do, so.
Yeah. I think they definitely have more sixes, but then it's like they, when they don't check raise the flop, then it reduces.
Yeah.
It sure does, and so we might be even maybe.
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty capped. And not just in theory and practice too, like people do raise sometimes. Alright, we get one through with king three. That queen sex defends at some stacked ups, right? Shorter, right?
Yeah, queen six.
He's definitely a defense, but I don't defend it either, shit. Might be 10, 5.
Uh, so. Really like 160? Button versus, or big blind versus button? Yeah, it's supposed to defend, it's worth a lot too, it's worth, it's worth point one bigs.
I was talking about the 10 4 hand.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
But I thought it would be in there, but.
Yeah. So yeah, defend the queen sex.
Was he button or was he cut off in our queen sit, the raise? I thought it was cut off versus the queens.
Even if it's cut off, I think he'll still be on there.
Yeah, that's why I was.
Still in there.
Still in there, okay.
Yeah, still in there for point zero seven, so not, not exactly custody. Um, not mandatory to raise that, you could if you wanted. You have a pretty atrocious hand with no draw.
I mean, I, I don't hate a barrel on a turn.
Ooh. Are we bluffing or?
No.
Value betting.
Yeah, I'm value betting with a four.
I don't know, man.
Wants to get called back queen.
A queen, a jack, a 10 with one diamond, come on, man.
I think you're just bluffing with the best hand. Yeah.
Cause when, okay, when it goes check, 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 like you just mandatory bet, right?
No.
Kind of, but like I'm just expecting them to hear me with like queen high very much and they'll, they'll can have some like slow played, you know, slightly better four with a keeper that plays or something, I guess, yeah.
Uh, we can raise, we can call here, I think both are fine.
Agreed.
Uh, if you do notice, he's uh, he's starting to use this bigger size even when he's shorter, so he went 2.3, which is like.
Yeah.
Makes me want to flat uh, a lot more.
Yeah. This turn card.
I think we can dunk here sometimes.
I was thinking the exact same thing, but more with a diamond.
We have enough equity to like see a river and then now I think we'll just give up.
You win a very small percentage of the time if checks through. Okay, gonna need.
I can get three bet here too sometimes, if you like, you're really.
Was just thinking the same thing, we're at 130 now, the button. Yeah, low king six off. Little something down here.
Yeah.
Alright, we take it to the streets. Uh, we've got a bunch of bullshit. Oh, yeah. You want to mainly have like two door straight through go flush there when you raise, I think?
Uh, we want, yeah, we want like some connectivity, like the.
Something.
Yeah, jack seven deuce is just like two disconnect, it's just not worth it.
I think if you just had king five with a backdoor flush, you could even think about it, but that hand was atrocious. I do know the backdoor flush is really important at this stack though. Uh, okay, we flop big, I guess.
Are these, are these fives also a three bet? Do they mix three bets and calls and no folds?
Uh, I don't think pocket fives is a three bet uh, this deep.
Cut off versus small blind, it's not, but the EV is like the same sixes do mix it though. I'm not doing enough of these.
Okay. That makes sense.
Uh, we call.
Yeah, multi-way, there's no way we're raising here multi-way like.
Man, that's kind of like what makes good raise.
You could have a small raise, but not, not with fives, right? It's like too good.
Yeah, like we can see a flop, I think we're gonna call again.
I think now we fold.
Thinking about raising at all, like, man, buck in the nut straight, that's a big deal.
Uh, I'm not thinking about raising for the reason that like if, if we're raising here, we're saying we have like ace deuce suited or pocket threes.
Any deuce, well, but you don't have any deuce.
Yeah, how many deuces do we have? It's ace two suited only, right?
You're right.
There's only two combos.
Well, what can we say? This guy C bets a lot, which makes me think, and he's a little, little wide, okay? Double paired and he checks back a, we still were getting value, that's a kind of a bad barrel, right? On his part.
Yeah, so. I think it was good. I was gonna call off the river too.
Alright, we get out of the way with a six off, that seems good. Huge, oh, and fold it, man, it's like, these late position spots, it might even go for it in the solver.
Yeah, okay, I think the guy to my left is like super tight as well. Like if uh, if like the big line and the buttons, the change positions, I would definitely be calling.
Yeah. Alright, 10 6 oh. That's supposed to be a defend?
Uh, I think so, I bet. It's like so bottom of the range. I just want to uh.
Yeah, this one's thinner. The other one, this is worth point zero five.
Yeah.
Your call. Your call. Deuce three off, we're gonna let go.
Can I chalk that up to uh, uh, counting for ICM?
I mean, fair enough, even for marginal decisions, yeah. So he raises three big blinds off of 28. We.
At this point, he's like a little steamy, if you notice that he had like 100 and something bigs now he has.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, it's just like we just hit the flop with such a low SPR when we call it 98 suited.
Yeah, I would think it just folded in at, at 25, at deeper, we would want to play the eight, nine suited.
Well, exactly, and like the um, the big raise size effectively makes a shower, right?
Yeah.
I'm just like pure exploiting him at this point, uh. Cause.
I mean, I, I understand like.
If I had an eight, nine or two spades, like I'm getting it all in here.
I understand like, you like call and outplay in post, but I just think that there's like limits to how much you can outplay when there's just not a lot of money behind. Cause like if he raised a normal size, there would be 5.6 here, we'd have an SPR of five and here we have an SPR of under four, just like it's just.
I might even check, to be honest.
I would prefer a check raise.
Um, we, we're in trouble.
We're in trouble. We go for the dog, this is kind of street poker, but it probably works a lot. Uh, we're not in trouble anymore.
Sometimes it works a lot.
All the cookies.
You just have to tank it down and rip it and get called.
And then he just snaps you off with an ace. Oh, what the fuck?
How do they give you that card on the river? Come on.
If they node locked, if you node locked this to a three, they might open, it's not even profitable open.
I mean, okay, so we can kind of deduce that, he's raising three X with like ace four off, right? This guy.
Yeah.
He's a little steamy.
Yeah, uh, he's, he's he's getting, he's getting spazzy.
So the, I think the uh, the read was correct, he's just happened to have it.
I mean, he had such a psychotically strong hand, yeah. Alright, we go for one third and we take that one down. Knocking the 97 oh. Aren't we? Aren't we?
Look at all the fun things we find when we're watching every big blind.
A lot of big blind defense.
All the knit folds that Vince makes.
Excuse me, I'm not following the 0.06%.
Six big blinds for 100, man, would you like your uh, would you like your results to be six big blinds for 100 better? Yeah, uh, we go for the three bet, I like the size, not too small, nice to see. Now. Is this guy studied? That's like a studied size, it's like who taught him how to do that size?
Uh, I think he's just clicking the 66% button on his.
Okay. I don't like, I don't like when I see them do like a 2.2 in position for bet, like what the fuck? Who taught you how to play poker?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna call it here.
I think the solver rips this sometimes.
Yeah, we can call it down, I think this is fine. I, I would prefer calling more than jamming though.
Yeah, cause like the read earlier was that the population's small blind raising range is too strong, so. Uh, we're gonna try and check out our king high, we're good, okay, he has, he can be light there. That's well played by him.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm gonna work.
Be kinda lucky.
You ever three bet bluff this?
Not a lot.
It's a pretty good one. I usually use ace seven and ace three, those are my two that I look for.
Versus button specifically?
I think ace seven is probably on the bottom.
In terms of the offsuit ace branch, because I know a lot of those down there mix, so I just picked those two.
Nice, nice.
I'm gonna call. I'm gonna check.
I think ace five.
Yeah.
You pick ace five, ace four, howdy.
Yeah, compared to ace three is seven.
Am I, am I crazy that I think this is a little bit too good?
Uh, I think that he's, because it's a paired board, he's gonna bet an ace a lot on the flop. Um, so when we dunk, he's gonna be still calling with a lot of two overcards, like just, you know, any two overcards. Because we're dunking small and then.
I just think that's kind of ambitious, like I want to get called by ace highs, that makes me kind of want to like in value slash protection bets and like, like 4X. You know, because like I think I can get called by a lot of ace highs, I think there's not that much of a year called by here.
I'm just like trying to extract maximum value here.
Yeah, max value, I mean, I don't think it gets better very often. You get raised, fold.
If he called you Vince and the river was a brick, would you small bet again or would you check bluff catch or like what's the plan?
Uh, I think depending on the card, so if it's connected with low cards, I would bet again. Uh, if it's like a nine, I think I just check all. Uh, if it's like a nine, I think I just check all.
I guess the thing if it's connected with low cards, you're kind of turning. Yeah, exactly. Like now you're bluffing. Like I wanna do that with like nine seven, you know, like something that has no showdown and blocks mates and blah blah blah. And he can have unblocks ace high, which is my my bluff target.
I wanted to call with king high.
I just think that's really ambitious. Try to get two streets out of king high. Like I think on turn, he's mainly calling overs with clubs. And like, yeah, you're pushing a little bit equity, but yeah. Alright, we're definitely fitting things that are suited. Nothing really to do but call here. Turn goes check, check.
I think I can.
You wanna block? I think you can just check. Think blocking is fine.
Now, I think he's side fold. I really wanna call. I gotta be honest, now that I'm, I don't remember a lot from this tournament, but like seeing the spot here.
What an absurd hand.
It's making me want to uh. Yeah, just take a peek.
I think folding is the correct move like six times out of seven.
I have a quick dumb question. Um, on open raise sizing the different stack depths, what they're at sort of the eighty sixty forty, but where do we? Go from two point five down to two point two down to two, you guys?
Uh, I generally go down to two point two at like fifty five bigs.
One two at fifty five and two point five bigger. Do you do you go to three like at eighty or are you still two point five at eighty?
Uh, I go to three at like. Two, over two hundred probably.
Okay.
I'm mainly using three in like soft fields and PKOs. Like fields where I really expect them to just like dump.
Right. And then where do you, where do you drop from two point two down to two point one and two and two?
Uh, do I even have a two point one? I think I do. It's like probably like thirty. But I I think that in general, like the pre flop raise sizing is like not that important as long as it's not too big. Like for instance, if you're two hundred big blinds deep and you're opening to like min raising, I don't think that's that bad. But it's like way worse if you're, if you have like forty big blinds and you're raising three X.
Right. And as long as you don't have significant sizing tells.
Yeah, yeah. Tim, where do you drop down to two?
To men, uh, like thirty, thirty five, somewhere around there.
Okay.
Yeah.
For what?
Min raise. Yeah. I'm gonna raise up.
For me, it's like. Yeah, depends where in the tournament. Sometimes I'll still two point two X off of like twenty if it's early. And everyone else has like eighty bigs and I'm just short.
It's not crazy. Uh, alright, we defend ace four off as we s- no, okay, not against cutters, but. Um. We flop well.
Do we don't here?
We have a lot of hands. But it's like if you're betting ace high, you're trying to either get value from worse or bluff better and it's hard. You do go small.
You look, what the man?
Have miracle river, you have the second nuts or third nuts. And you go for one ten. You get called by. Pocket. May check flop.
This is like.
It's pretty stationary.
So this is. So this is like guy that I was trying to get value from right from like dunking and then going for river as well, getting to call with like king high.
Yep. Pretty stationary. You get three bet by forty six big blinds. We call. He goes for thirty three, you call, I think that's fine. Once you're in this node.
Uh, here, I think we can jam.
Yeah, you could stuff it or you could just see a river. Yep. Don't hate it.
I think. And then I hope he doesn't have queen ten.
Yeah. When he three bet you, so you're just not expecting to run into. Queen ten a lot.
You'd be surprised, man. Like you get, you get a lot more exploitative, the higher stakes you go, I think.
Yeah. Do we ever just get to rip this pre? Hijack the cutoff?
Uh, probably, but uh, I think Jax is my bottom of range. Like I'm never ripping up a tens.
Uh, yeah, that's what I thought. It's always just like that. Just just put it in.
So this is, okay, I I think that uh, a lot of the the four bets in the solver is. Like it's good to know that you can do that, but I don't think that they're that profitable to actually use.
Because it assumes, it assumes he has all the three bet bluffs that he doesn't.
All this stuff, yeah. Yeah, cause it's like you, you're gonna four bet jam with like ace five suited and then he spazzes that with like pocket nines, right? Like. It's just uh. I think the EV of playing like flops, turns and rivers is just much, much higher than than trying to go for.
Tight, tight reggie stats. He jams, we fold.
So you can, we can raise here, I think.
And you can rip. Yeah, I was thinking of ripping against twenty big blinds. I don't hate it. It's fine. We raising it through.
Even when he protects his limping range, he doesn't wanna. He doesn't wanna go out.
Yeah.
Against the jam.
Uh, I like a fold versus the three big blind sizing. Yep, I think it's good. I think a lot of people. Are in autopilot and do not adjust the ranges properly. Like, I think that is very frequently a strong hand.
Uh, I think I'm raising a lot here, yeah. The high low suited combos in a small blind, I think that I just like, I make my game easier. And just raise.
And you raise this to four X, not to three X there?
Uh, we're both like fairly deep.
Sixty plus, equals seventy. I mean, so yeah, the solver breaks up the range slightly differently. It's fine. I'll be honest, I like focus more on my like low raises here and like mid raises.
So like all of the nine, seven off, ten, seven off, like that kind of, those kind of like bad hands. I just move that into the high low suited combos.
Yeah. Ace nine oh. Gotta let that one go. King nine oh.
Raise, we can flat here. I think both was fine.
Yeah, we're eleven big blinds effective. It's kind of awkward.
Uh, I think I should have bet one big line on the flop there if he checked.
Okay. Man, he's betting two big blinds on river. Like what the heck is he supposed to have?
Yeah, so.
Oh, it's a queen. Goodness. Okay. Two point two bigs and we're gonna see. Hey.
So this is the same guy that uh I don't a lot against.
I think it's fine. I just think we can go bigger. We have a sad. He's got a cost with some some stuff. He's not pulling diamonds, not pulling hearts. Yeah, I would just get your one more big blind on turn. Like in theory, of course, we like, we don't turn when he misses a C bet huge, but I think that's different on a four liner. It's gonna have the size down. That one did flop. I know I'm gonna try and keep it moving for everybody, cause I know I've been going pretty slow, so just holler if you need to stop on hand, okay? We like king high with no meaningful backdoors bill against a big C.
Only a backdoor straights, it's not good enough.
And we overfold the ace, ace sideboards anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And again, that's I think it's like fifty. Uh, you can true bet this, right? But calling's fine. I'm like kind of more inclined to call it in the butt. Raising here is a nice fact of pushing out people behind. Yeah, I think this is really thin, man. It's okay. Yeah, you might have gotten buffed up with this hand and you might have gotten buffed off some equity. Or getting gotten bet off of some equity in case.
Yeah.
This is so not draw, it's so hard for him to find a draw on this board. To bet.
Yeah, I mean, I am check raising sometimes with like some. Jack ten suited, queen ten suited kind of stuff with backdoors, cause they seem like, they seem like good buffs.
Yep, but they aren't.
No, they aren't. Yeah, even if he has like pocket tens, we were live against it and it would be nice to turn card. King jack suited, we go for the three bet.
And that's a small three bet, right? Compared to this.
I think at this point, we're on some kind of a bubble or like. I don't remember if this is the money bubble or the final table bubble.
Could be a money bubble. We've been through a lot of hands.
Uh, we're gonna see that here a lot.
Yeah, and we get through. Cool. I think you're gonna see that this a lot.
Uh, I think we can continue to barrel.
Just a stone cold zero equity barrel. Life is good and we get through. Three players.
Uh, I think we moved tables.
Yeah. King seven oh. Just think by isoling. Call behind with pocket fours.
Yeah, it's fine.
Definitely do deep enough.
Um, I would generally call here if there was, we were heads up, um, because there's big blind does involve as well. We don't have a diamond. I think it's fine to get out of the way. Plus he is betting into two bigger stacks.
Right.
So. We just let it go.
We take king queen three ways, we check flop. We bet turn small. It's fine. It's like thin, but probably good. We get out of the way on a monotone flop.
I would probably check the king on the, on, on the turn and call rivers.
I think it's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think both are fine.
Yep, okay.
I think it's close. Uh, I think you can iso this, right? You guys are against some type of my games. I'm a psycho from the. The big one. Okay, don't really, well, the EVs are close. You iso some worse juices.
It's a jack deuce. It's a jack deuce.
Yeah, jack deuce. I mean, queen deuce, the difference is point zero one, so if you went for it, I would. We do bet this. See.
How does he go sixty five percent there? Thing is nice. Check. Check the check call. Uh, we can bet now. Um, he should be betting most of his queens, uh.
Yeah, and if you're gonna go small, you're trying to get called by worse.
Yeah, like if we did have a queen, we're still betting small, so it's fine.
Ooh, I think you're value earning yourself here. I don't think he calls you twice with worse. Yeah.
I was just trying to get airballs to pull.
You beat all the airballs.
Yeah, but if I check any bluffs, he's winning with an airball.
That's fine. I mean, fair. I think that's a case for checking flop because then you feel better here in river. I mean, it's like there's, we've kind of had like.
I check the flop.
I bet. Okay, check turn. I mean, check turn, sorry. I think there's like a little bit of a. Competing read here where like we don't expect our opponents to really be over bluffing. So we actually have get like more EV out of the branches of the game tree then that include checking ace high to show it down.
Yeah. It's fine.
Yeah, that's something we've seen a couple of times here. This guy's super tight. Also, he just like has like a pocket pair of something.
I think like betting one are both fine on the turn.
But then after betting turn to bet river again thirty three percent.
Oh, no, I would always check river if if I got called.
That's the thing. I just think he's just looking you up. It's just especially a queen pair. It's like he knows.
If I'm bluffing river, I don't wanna use this hand first of all, but.
Can I see the spot in detail wizard?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Uh, so we're. Twenty five effective hijack versus button.
Like river's just gonna be a jam, I think.
Yeah, how do I, how do I copy this industry?
Um, go to the. Yeah, and then.
I think you click on view hand details.
Where's that? Oh, uh, like fifth from the bottom.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and then copy. Yeah, you got it.
And then to look up a spot.
Upload.
Then you go to.
In the top right. Uh, yep.
Sweet, thanks. I don't usually do this.
This is like my favorite feature. This is also why I enjoy playing on ACR more than GG, cause I can just instantly check hands afterward.
So yeah, we just, we just don't really bet, earn a lot. Which makes sense, like this is neither a value bet nor bluff. So.
And then the river.
And then even after betting, we still. Don't really wanna bet river. So yeah, you can just take a passive line here. It sucks to be out of position. But I don't think you make your life better by putting in too much money with the middle of your range.
Yeah. This is uh, no good.
We defend this bro. I was gonna say, I feel like this check raise coming. The pretty bread and butter check raise, I think.
Uh, okay, we're, we did improve our hand, but like. Not our range. I think we can actually here or bet small. I think both are fine.
I think that's good. It's nice that um, you're chopping with everything ace nine or worse, but you do expect to have some ace jack plus sometimes. He bets there is hot, which like could easily be tens or kings or hands worse than yours. So it's kind of nice.
You certainly look like you have a, what you look like your hand is right now is a ten.
Yeah, yeah, it's true. Yeah, it's ten nine and the old ten.
Yep, so.
We win against king queen. Pocket nine, okay.
Wow.
That makes sense. Kind of weird bet from him on turn. Like I know his range wants to bet a lot, but like his hand doesn't want to.
Yeah, so glad we got one extra street by checking there.
I think that one was perfect. King seven two, we saw, hello. Go for the small bet. We're gonna barrel.
Yeah, it's double suited, so we're gonna size up just slightly.
I think you size up just a little bit more to like GO two.
We put him on a lot of draws there, right? And a few tens.
Alright, we like raising pre, software likes betting the flop, uses some various sizes, the size is good. On turn. Yeah, it's using nine, you seven point five. It uses the smaller size a little bit, uses the bigger size. That's the thing I just wanted to like get another big blind and half into the butt, but he pulled anyway.
Just wants a geometric on the river.
Yeah, it's like GO two.
Uh, we can. Geo two, what, I know what geometric is. What do you mean by GO two?
Oh, sorry. It's when you're on turn, so you only have two streets ahead. There's also GO three if you're on flop and you're already setting up three streets of geometric betting.
Gotcha.
Yep, people also call it E two sometimes.
Okay.
Uh.
I think better check, both are fine.
Kind of a range bet spot, right?
And what's the calculation for GO two? What is this? What's the size? And what's the calculation for G O two? What is this? What is the sizing?
Uh, I mean, on the previous one, it was gonna be like ninetyish percent pot roughly.
Yeah.
There is a formula, but I forget what it is.
I just eyeball it.
Yeah, I just eyeball this is too. It weighs too much brain power to, uh, to figure out the exact size.
Yeah, I'm never like using the formula in game.
Uh, we check back turn. We have showed battle. You want to barrel that turn?
Kind of want to barrel the turn.
Nah, I think we can do both. It's fine.
We have some like. Like other nine acts like king nine. I'm thinking of in particular.
Panda's not following the turn. Um, to barrel.
Yeah, I'm I'm tripling this one. I mean, can we look, uh? I'm curious if we could look at this one. I'm not sure. I know this is one that I used to not find as much. But I think it looks it usually.
I'm glad you went for flop because I think, uh, I've had a leak in the past where I'm like, it's high. I don't need to like. See bet too much here, but it's like, no, you just need to find a lot of bets. Yeah, it's a range bet.
Yeah.
It's going even smaller.
And yeah, turns, uh, yeah. And it's worth a lot. Checking is worth one point seven two. Betting is worth one point nine. It's a point one eight big blind mistake, so. It's worth getting after that one. Now you might have just he might just had a better hand, but, uh. He also can have like a week eight. He could just be sitting here with eight nine. He folds turn to a huge sizing. Or eight, seven or something.
Also, look, the river was never folding. Did I want to pure bluff raise or what? What's going on here on the river? Oh, we're just not in this node because we're off the tree. Right, okay, you're right.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, we're gonna.
Three big blinds from like small blind. Okay, fine, whatever.
Ooh, all the two over cards. I think it's pretty standard.
Is it?
Yeah, I think it's pretty standard.
Uh, let this one up in a second. I think we like.
I think you can fold your tune.
This which you might need a little bit more juice. Yeah, you might just need a little bit more juice like single club. King high, I feel better about ace high, of course, is great. Yeah. I think sometimes on these low boards, I start to see a lot of folds like the queen high jack high region. Like not.
By the way, if the turn is a brick and he's checking, I'm all in.
Yeah, there's also a thing I noticed here, like paying attention to my backdoors, like this hand never backdoors a straight. Jack ten does. And he goes for all of it.
He's all in.
If, uh, if a four rolls off here and then he checks, I'm all in.
Why? Why not bet six?
Got leverage.
I think it's, uh, they're gonna call with overcards too often.
You're losing to overcards, what?
Yeah, that's why I'm all in.
Against six, he's gonna call like forty percent of his stack off.
So yeah, flop flop, solver thinks it is a zero E V spot. Uh, it's folding. But like, if anything, I think his range here is like a little little strong, not a little weak. So, all right, it makes sense. What are you doing this? Flop, you raise your raise seven. Race more pairs. You do fold a little bit king high, a lot of queen high, a lot of jack high, a lot of ten high. So yeah, queen jack with a club, always continuing without a club, you just fold your call.
Yeah, can we see the turn when he checks?
Yeah, king queen is good enough. To call no matter your suits. King jack is good enough to call no matter your suits. Ace high never folds of any kind. Alright, turn. Facing a check. I mean, we are gonna go pretty hard here.
Me?
Not really this combo so much. I guess it's just still a little bit too good, but queen ten.
Look, I'm exploiting going all in.
Six.
That is the thing, though. I I agree. That's like I'm working on in my game as well, just like. Size down so you get multiple streets out of this. You get more leverage from your bluffs. You get more value from your value. Yeah, you get to you get to bluff now and then you get to see a river and then you get to act again in position.
Against I guess this player who's.
His range is so like inelastic to sizing, like the same stuff will do the same stuff against six as it will against jam.
Yeah.
I I agree with what you're saying, but to exploit this player, I'm just gonna wreck in his face.
Uh, yeah, I this seems like a decent jam, right? Ace ten off, we go for a ten three bet. Feel like we're probably on the bubble if you're using that size. Checking here seems good. Get out of the way. Uh, yeah, we saw some of those recently, right? Off two tens calling from the small blind. Yeah. We're still in the spot.
It's not as appealing with the guy right there who can jam a lot of stuff in the big blind.
Fair.
Sorry.
Man, you fought a lot of hand. I like I like the call. Alright, we have the second flush. We gotta bet it. We really need to bet this.
Yeah, we can't let him check behind with an ace.
Bro.
That's the.
What a fucking nit. How does he check that back?
After you check, after you check, you're so half like I'm just never expecting you to have better except.
You must be trapping a lot for him to for him to want to check.
He's got notes on you.
Um, I think this is an F T bubble.
If I'm not. I mean, fair, but you don't have to put your stack at risk. Also, like out of position. You don't get to control whether Beck goes into the pot like he can still bet and make your life miserable. It's like you can throw out four big blinds, six big blinds. And reevaluate like he's not bluffing you a lot, right? He's nitty thirty five nine. You gotta value bet this player type. Or he's like loose passive, right?
Yeah, I don't know why. Why did you check? Well, I don't know if you remember, but.
Is the third number twenty two percent three bet pre flop?
Yeah, that's gonna be on a this is twenty three hand sample, so it's tiny.
Okay.
I think the P F R isn't more. Uh, more useful insight into this player type. Yeah, I think I'm expecting that most players in the field definitely this player is gonna make more calling mistakes than. Then betting mistakes. I'm not expecting that he's just gonna like spaz out. I am expecting that he's gonna pay us.
I was thinking about betting too, but like having a jack, we block a lot of two pairs that he's calling with. So.
Yeah, and I mean, you do block the straight, but I just still think like he can have. Anything here. He can have pocket sevens with heart. He can have sets. He can have, yeah.
He's not really the type who's gonna bluff, right? And he's not gonna value that worse clearly, so. So I think we just need to capture value, but it's, you know.
Uh, I think we need to do our own betting. Yeah, I think it's it's a good spot to see. For. We win.
Got him.
Got him. On the buttons.
We ever raised ace eight there?
Uh, AC suited against like eighteen twenty big blind, probably not.
I was just looking at these spots, the rejaming. Well, it's like it's awkward because you have big set behind. But the rejaming range is like ace ten suited. If you were gonna use this, it would have to be a. It would have to be a bluff.
Can't you main click this one?
Um. Not sure, like my three bet size, uh, when we're this. Short is generally five big blind. So like I don't have that four, four point five. I don't I don't have that size.
Yeah, but well, he's off eighteen. You can't really go five.
Exactly. Yeah, I agree. You might use a four here.
I'm gonna find one like this. I'm gonna look for one.
I'm sorry. We have to keep playing.
Uh.
Oh, no, wait, we got jammed up.
Six handed.
Gonna let go five three off under I C M pressure, right? It's a T P D call. But.
Bold, bold.
Yeah, I see him fold.
Well, there, bud.
There's your five.
There's your five. Five sides. Pretty good when you're starting on thirty. Seems good.
See the odds.
Yeah, cool. One second. Alright.
AC suited is a pure three bet to four, basically.
Wow. That's assuming what, uh, what I C M stage?
Uh, final two tables.
Okay.
Was that a big blind average? Was that ace eight? I do not have the. Like click. Three that. In my game, I'm not studied on that spot, so.
Yeah. It's fair.
I mean, four and five, what's the difference really? It's just about how much fold equity you get and, uh. And high I C M, especially the shorter you are, it's kind of gonna be similar.
Alright, kingdom suited four ways, we fought big. Okay, he does our betting for us.
Oh, that was nice.
It's like, it's funny. We have no money behind, not sure.
Just jam.
Queen, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would jam with no money behind, but it's.
What I guess.
What happened on that? On that king ten there? Did we bet and he folded?
No, we we, uh, we won. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed this.
Okay, we bet that. I see that. Yeah, we bet small. Okay, moving on.
I missed all this.
Yeah, no, things happen.
We missed the whole hand.
Oh, my gosh.
This is the thing.
Uh, things happen.
Dogs like.
Oh, this is annoying. Wow.
Yeah.
On what is this final table now?
No, not yet.
Oh.
But I'm gonna head guys. Uh, good win Vince. I'll catch the video later. Cheers.
Nice cheers. What the heck are you gonna do here?
So now it's final two table?
We can fold too.
Uh, it's like we're never good, right? But, ugh, yeah, we're drawing to basically just a jack. A ten might be alright.
Yeah, tens tens are pretty good outs. Yeah, so like, so let's say you have like roughly five outs.
Yeah, this is definitely a board that he should not be docking on, so.
No, it's ridiculous play.
I think it's fine to just get out of the way.
Yeah.
We find the big bet here.
I would go pot size if, uh, we weren't on. Above them.
Right. I think, um, bubble situations, your flats start to evaporate. Like, it's not bad, but, um. You can basically start three betting small your whole continuing range.
Yeah, that's one thing I've been noticing as well to. Like in the other sim where the ace eight suited pure makes it forward, there's zero percent flat.
Yeah, exactly. Louis tried to roast me for a the final table, uh, three betting king queen suited because he's like, it's a call, but like, no, it's a T P B call. It's like. Starts to slot well into a three betting range. Um.
Yeah, I don't know how much more like we're getting with four though.
What's that?
Like when I when I three bet the five, I feel like my fold equity is high. When I four, when it when I imagine that I three bet to four. It feels like the fold equity is very low.
Uh, you know, the either. Call and fold flop a lot. I think they're gonna generally play pretty honestly, though. Um, also, people, there's why so much. There's also why so little. I'll be like, ah, fuck this guy. He has aces every time I fold like. So.
You can make it four point two, throw a little extra tickler on there. I I think it's enough. Generally, maybe not in Ontario pool, but generally you get a four better a fold out of them. In my experience.
Yeah.
Um, betting flop here seems. Fine.
Sometimes king queen will call that kind of thing.
Barrel. We go for three streets. Are we ever good here?
Yeah, I think so. You can have a worse tracks all the time.
What the fuck?
You can have ace three, you know?
We're on like a final table bubble?
That was not well played by. Are we in the money?
Uh, we are in the money, yeah, for sure.
What the fuck?
Because I don't know if it's small field, like final table and in the money could be the same, right?
Uh, that I would take a note.
I I think.
He called flop. He called flop.
Yeah.
It's high.
Well, even pre, he he called the.
Yeah, he called free. He called flop. He called everything.
Oh, man. Handing handing me the keys to the castle there.
Nonbeliever, man.
So he goes to thirty three and he was original opener. Okay. Let me see a raise. We're supposed to. We call it night six two, we get out of the way.
Uh, we should be real close to the final table, I think.
Jack seven suited, we go for a kind of bigish sizing. Yeah, you have to be a little bit respectful because he's bigger stacked, but you you're not stacking me yourself yet, so. Gets a value. Ace nine suited versus final table situation, button raised, small blind, flat.
On that jack seven, are we are we stacking off on that jack seven? With the eight, nine and the jack ten available to him?
I mean, this is the exact bubble, so like. It's so it's pretty tough. I think that we just want to get as much value as possible and then like check the river for a safe. Safe, uh, rounds.
I think that's legit. You can definitely get some value, but yeah, like stacking off is a little scary.
Cause like nine eight is definitely in there. Plus, he's a big stack.
Jack ten is in there, nine is in there and seven.
These three office in there.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, but yeah, I mean, are you guys thinking about squeezing this? Sure. Right? I just really want to find a lot of a lot of squeezes because like the small blind call is like. Like what what does he have? What hand does he have?
I would squeeze here normally if this, but this is like stone, uh, F T bubble. I'm. A little less inclined.
I think you get a lot of folds.
We're just folding out worse, though.
I think we're folding out a lot of stuff with equity and then we get to just like take down a small pot like. You know, like, is he opening ten off on the button? Like, I'm okay with folding out that hand and taking.
I think we would much rather squeeze ace nine offsuit, ace seven offsuit, ace three offsuit.
Yeah, I think the, uh, the payout jump also for like. Like tenth place, I think was two hundred and like fifty bucks. But ninth place is like five hundred eighty.
So this one's kind of reasonable. Thirty five, twenty, forty?
Six players, right? Or five?
Uh, five, final two tables. Just give us a sense of. Like, first of all, small line just isn't plating here. That's the problem with trying to get a sim on this. Okay, why am I just gonna run it? I'm gonna run it heads up. I'm gonna run it up.
He has he has a sliver. You can put it in. You can put.
I know, but it's just like, it's just goofy.
Might as well.
So yeah, this specific hand doesn't go for it, but like ace eight suited does kind of everything.
Every other one does.
So basically, I'm a god.
Exactly. Exactly. A lot of weird stuff in here, Jack nine suited. Okay, I do want to see if I can have a slightly deeper one that'll be a little bit more reasonable. Because like at twenty five, he might start to have more. Forty, thirty, seventy. This is a different spot, but it has us like. Not threatened at all. And yeah, like you were saying, like trashy offsuit stuff. Not really ace nine suited. This stuff can jam. Alright.
Interesting.
I'm just always looking for slots for a crush.
Usually good. The sand is a pretty sweet call.
Right, we can check the flop, but just on the theory that we just don't bet a lot from the middle, even with a hand that really wants to.
Yeah.
I was, uh, I was checking to check raise.
Yeah, 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 for sure. And then, yes, like turn checks through, which is kind of good and bad. Like, we want to get value, but.
I think we can call it and like lose all.
Oh, no, you have to call there.
Yeah, I just think you I think people wake up and just bet like. Yeah, I just think you, I think people wake up and just bet like. Like, he can't bet like king nine for value. When it's checked, check, 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 check the whole way.
Trying to arrange him, it's kind of weird, he, uh, he'll have a lot of like queen jacks still probably suited, queen ten suited, but. He'll have worse nines.
Cause he checked her, he can check turn expecting that button will bet queens.
I think you can definitely call here if you were so inclined, but.
I think either way.
Nor, it's fine.
I do wanna call here, and it's not because I'm expecting a lot of like airball buffs, I am expecting some worse for value, like. I don't know, does he ever like?
Pocket sevens, I don't know.
Yeah, I was about to say, and like ridiculous players will have to show up with pocket jacks here, which we lose too, sorry, um. Yeah, they're both kind of loose over a small sample size, what it's worth, I don't know. Okay, that's fine, you saved money.
Ace four.
Ace four, right, you'll never know what he had. We get three bet and we just let it go against a big stack.
Yeah, I just thought, uh.
If you really thought he was out of line, you could throw it back at him, right?
Yeah. That's fine. Uh, I believe we may be at the final table at this point, or like one hand before it.
And we're like a kind of medium stacks, a lot of I C M pressure on us, gonna be a little handcuffed. I think that nine it off was close, but. Close does not mean. Where did I show up at? Ace, king, and nine, those are reasonable.
Oh, yeah, we're definitely on the final table, I remember that hand.
Uh, TJ, alright, let's go. Nope.
Oh, nevermind, now we're definitely on the final table.
We gotta walk.
Alright, let's go, let's go.
Get one through. Vamos, vamos. Alright, we're getting some hands, that's, that's good. Kind of an awkward one. Uh, definitely. Near, yeah, we're near the short stack, so actually not the hugest I C M pressure on us. We go kind of big even against three players. Four, eight.
Oh, thanks, mom, okay.
Kind of medium, medium, small, small. And we go for the tight check bag.
I think it's kind of.
Hate it.
If we uh. If we rip it, then he's just like, oh, I have pocket fours.
Yeah, no, exactly, cause like your last twelve big blinds are worth a lot. And getting twelve more big blinds out of this guy is not worth that much, so there is a big asymmetry there.
It's like hard for him to call too, like if he has jack ten, is he, is he really stacking off here against under the gun?
Right. Yeah, I mean, like, what, what hand is he expecting you to turn over, like, he's expecting you to just triple off, like, ace, king, ace, ten, something, something weird, king ten? I don't hate that, it's tight, but I think uh I C M requires some tight checks. We get one through.
Not three betting against large opening stack from the button, I think it's fine.
Yeah, we're, we're already at this point, though, where um. We, the I C M pressure on us has gone up significantly now that there are three significantly shorter stacks, and so um. Like, it's not that I wouldn't do that, but like, recognize that the E D of doing that just goes down, like, checking at like all nodes just starts to suggest itself. Alright, it's echo. We declined about this. We declined to check the flop, we declined about the flop. Once we check that, we, and we check it all the way down? Ditch nights, so. Ace queen O against a shoddy. Go for the bet.
Yeah, um, I'm betting here because the guy's short, so like his flating range needs to be super connected here with the ace queen jack board.
Yep. Well, I think we just check that a lot, like, yeah. I mean.
But in that situation, where we check a lot, every hand that we check, we also do some betting, so.
Yeah.
You can play it either way.
Yeah, I think we can play it either way.
And the.
Now we.
I'm just trying to get him to pay me off.
Smoking him. And if he has like. He just didn't have much, really.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, if he has like ace ten, I think you're getting paid, so, like, one game if you should just go bigger, but.
Does he even have ace ten?
Doesn't he jam the turn if he has ace ten?
I, I have no idea what he has, I mean, like, I don't think he has a lot of calls in theory, period.
Yeah, when that, when the ace pairs.
Like, what is he supposed to be calling flop with anyway? You know, like.
Spades?
Yeah. Weird one. Alright, we're like queen nine no-go. Kings, is that a good hand?
Oh.
Not crazy about that.
Uh, there are fifteen, sixteen, thirty-five big blind stacks behind me, the large stack on the big blind.
I mean, obviously, but, but like, I actually think. I think um too much calling is not the solution in I C M, it's more like. Small three betting and also like this is, we have a risk premium on this, but this is gonna fear the threshold, like this is the hand that we're gonna stack off with, um, short stacks be damned. Like, it's not a satellite, you know?
Was your idea that you thought that the short stacks might jam over the call?
Yeah, and the.
Never, it's an F T, just make it five.
Yeah, exactly. Alright.
They'll be like, they'll be like, oh, the two mid sacks are getting involved, maybe I can ladder, like, if they're jamming. I think if they're jamming over the raise and the call, they're probably jamming over the raise and the five, like, they just have a jacks plus or something.
Okay, so I can't get this to pull it up automatically with a final table solution, so I just need to go to one myself, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, sort of like thirty and thirty with some fifteens floating around and some big stacks.
Yeah, it's like fifteen, fifteen, thirty, thirty, sixty, sixty.
Hijack three thirty's. Hijack versus lowjack with like, lowest equal stacks, although he does have more. Uh. Twenty-nine versus thirty-two with a couple of short stacks around.
No, average stacks wrong, average stack should be like thirty or forty.
I know.
Alright. Uh. You're going way too fast, Tim. Don't panic.
I mean, this one doesn't have the short stacks.
Go up one, two, go up one, uh, yeah, that's one's okay, I think.
Yeah, it's missing the short stacks, but it'll still give us an idea.
Doesn't, doesn't have like the shortings, but.
Yeah. It's fine, it'll give us an idea, I just, yeah, I think we're not gonna see a lot of flooding. So, yeah, just, just pop it.
Alright, alright.
Call something. Cause like, I don't want.
Stuff that calls is the stuff that really doesn't wanna get four bet.
Right, and also like, yeah, cause kings is just stacking off, you do have risk premium, but like, oh, well, and um.
I'm not uh. You did, I'm flying here, old, I'm flying here to trap.
Yeah. I just don't think they're bad, maniacal usually, yeah, like, I think if anything, they're a little nitty, they're not like, just like, aha, raising the call, like. Ace ten off, let's go. I don't see that a lot in my games. It's like ace queen suited gets a little bit of value, because it can bring in some worse aces and worse bust draws on the like big blind especially. Um, kings, you really don't want like ace queen off in the big blind to see this flop, like. Ace jack off, like, ace five suited in the big blind, like, just get them out of this pot, anyway, we have a good hand, we have a good flop. Oh, my god. Does he have ace king?
Oh, he had so many outs, oh, my god.
Poor guy. Oh, man, that worked out. Alright, we get his.
His turn jam is pretty wild.
It's just too much.
Go all in, yeah.
Exactly, it's just too much, you just lose the maximum when you happen to have turned top set.
He can like be sixty and call a jam and then like not have to lose it all on the brick river.
I bet he saw my.
This.
Like, how does he have pocket kings?
I know, right, yeah, I wanna jam this.
Uh, yeah, jam is fine, jam is good too.
Both have to be worried about each other. Uh.
I think jam's good.
You have to make it six players now.
I mean, fair, but.
Yeah, no, it won't really affect him much.
I mean, here's thirty-two facing twelve, just to give us some idea. Yeah, we're just. We're not limping against a.
And that one, he's not the shorty, though.
I mean, fair, but like, yeah, it gives you an idea, it gives you an idea, just a lot of aggression here.
Ooh. Yeah, that just saves the money, come on, man.
It did just save some money. Interesting, five big blind, it's a spicy size. Uh, okay, alright, alright.
Yeah. I'm just pure exploit, there's, there's, you don't even have to look this up, man, this is just a pure exploit.
That was pretty sick, uh, here's forty-one versus thirty. That's whatever. No, but you're gonna have just some trashy raises, I mean, but there it is, jack seven O, you found jack six O. Legit, trashy stuff. I like it. Alright, this time we did find the jam with king queen O. Alright, so we got some eliminations, we're like tied for second, and we have a shorty. Get a walk. Not gonna call that.
I think we can.
Facing a.
Oh, wait, nevermind, he's fourteen bigs now, yeah.
It goes. I mean, it's like, he's supposed to have worse hands, which is, does he, does he ever?
The thing is, like, if he ripped it with like eight, nine, or ten big lines, I think it's just like side call.
Yeah, for sure. And you think it's a higher probability at like ten big blinds, and he has like king X and suited connectors and whatever, suited broadways. Yeah. It's kind of disappointing, but like. We defend jack eight, oh, stacks have kind of evened up a little bit, he doubled up through big stack looks like. You donk, you get raised. You take it to the streets.
Yeah, this is uh. Okay, so.
Pretty good, I like it.
I don't know if there's anybody that's still in here, uh. But definitely, uh, for people who play in Ontario, this guy on the button, his funky con, and he's like extremely loose and aggressive.
I is pretty nice, um, I like that you're doing it with uh, like a pretty bad eight X, you know? So, and like, you don't need to do this with a five X, a five X can probably just call, but uh, eight X, no kicker, good.
Yeah.
Ace eight could probably just call.
Take it to the streets, man.
Yeah, okay, he has twenty-three big lines now, if he was shorter, it's worth it. Call it off. T seven O.
Free betting this hand, actually, I think.
Now that you're big stacked.
Yeah.
Looks like we're gonna get one through, nope.
Uh, barrel, I think is.
We barrel turn, it's like a zero equity barrel, but whatever, you can do, you're allowed. You can be pretty, pretty loose there with your uh turn barreling range against.
I think it's also about like two A M at this point on a Tuesday. So uh, the delirium is definitely starting to sink in.
Yeah, against.
Oh, this isn't the one from last night.
No, not from last night. I think betting here is really good, uh, we get value from uh two overcards.
Yeah, or, and or protection. Gonna barrel this, this seems like the dream turn, right?
Yeah, we're still getting value from two overcards and then check, check now, I believe. And uh. We don't win.
Kind of a loose load on turn, I was thinking when we got to turn, like, you could go for a bigger sizing here.
I mean, I was just trying to get called by two of the cards of the heart.
Ah, I think you had this on the wrong branch of your tree, though, this isn't value, this is a bluff.
Ah, merge, that's a little mergey.
Yeah, but like your ace seven, right, like your king seven, your three X, your pocket nines. You have a lot of hands here that kind of wanna bomb it. Six takes you to a pot of twenty and eighteen big blinds in his stack behind, so it's like G O two. But also, you can find some slightly smaller sizes in I C M. Oh, wait, sorry, river comes, do we go for it?
I think not.
The other thing, though, you could just go for it.
Yeah, I think if you. Definitely go for it, but.
He, he check calls, check calls, in this case, he has ace, but like a lot of times we're expecting him to show like a week one pair type hand, pocket fours, a week seven.
I think without the four of hearts, like, we can definitely just go for it here.
Yeah, cause all his one pair type hands don't like this river.
Yeah.
We don't wanna heart, because we wanna, we don't wanna him to have a two part heart auto fold, do we care about having the four because we want him to have the four, five auto fold? Or is that doesn't matter because we have it beat? When we're thinking about uh constructing.
Pair. I think maybe you're, you're, you're calm, yeah, it doesn't matter because we have any four beat anyway.
Yeah.
But we don't wanna heart.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
This is kind of sick, uh.
Getting spicy. Getting spicy.
Hot in here.
Oh, man, you blocked the shit out of this board.
I know, but. Yeah, that's kind of why, like, so when we raise and he calls and then, and it comes like jack ten, it's just like, it smashes his range.
Yeah.
So that I think that's why we checked on the flop, and uh, maybe get like a little bit of uh. Tiny value. Slash bluff, just like a little merge, and then, on the turn.
Uh, we let this go.
Yeah, it's fine.
Get a walk. Where are stacks at? We are still a little bit short, this guy's close to us.
Ragnar shove pot in my flight. Who's that, that's someone in our group, right?
Spoilers, are we gonna end up winning this?
Yeah.
Alright, cool, uh, we could defend this, right?
Uh, yeah, we can definitely defend this, um.
I think it's worth a sliver.
It's just like the bottom of the range, so I just remove it.
Yeah, that's. Oh. It's disappointing. We get jammed on. King, queen, oh, it's like generally, okay, now that you're short of the ship, I was gonna say otherwise, you wanna just, you wanna limp against this guy a lot, because, yeah, you wanna play pretty defensively. But not there. We go for it? Be a lot cooler if he called us a face jack. Raise and take it. Don't defend four three O. Don't defend four-three-oh. And now we've, nope, not tripped up a little bit, we can blind it up as well. Alright, we better jack. We better two jacks.
Pause for just a second. I just wanted to look at the stack sizes. Twenty-four, forty. You just got to go back one just to see stack size. There they are. Okay. We're at night. Twenty, twenty-four and big. Alright.
Yeah. Kind of close.
Yep.
Sixes, we get it in. Uh, we see bet here. I've noticed this guy's, uh, seems like he's just kind of. Playing straightforward. Folding flop lot.
Straightforward on this, uh, three-handed.
This guy's got a little more game for better or worse.
I think at this point, like, everyone on this final table, uh, maybe except for like one or two people has like over a hundred K in Ontario pool.
Wow, okay. Oh, shit.
Oh, uh-oh. Let's.
Yay!
So he has, he has ace jack.
Goodness.
Yep, he has ace jack, he's clean, and we get there. Alright, easy game.
I just wanna, I just want to point out, that's the only time of this whole tournament that I suck somebody out.
Nah, standard. It's all good. And so with that, now we're a big stack. Okay, so almost, we're almost equal with him. Because there was a spot where if he drops down five more big blinds, then we get to like really grind him.
Yeah.
Seems like letting, giving us walks a lot, too.
I think when we get to heads up, the guy's like begging me for, for a, a deal.
Thirty, twenty-five, fifteen. I think the play at this point goes kind of psycho. Thirty, twenty-five, I need short.
Just go by average. Like sort by average and you'll find it more easily, I think.
Uh, kind of. Average is like twenty-eight.
Yeah, less than that.
Twenty-five.
Or, um, yeah, twenty-four, I don't know, twenty-five.
I think this is actually closest one, thirty, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five. Yeah. Or like forty, ten, thirty. I think, interesting, it hasn't started jamming yet. Kind of thought it would start jamming.
Oh, you're, you're looking at jamming range? I thought you were asking if this is your own. Yeah, I'm not jamming.
Yeah, no. And here, fifty or forty, ten, thirty. And.
Yeah, no shot. I'm jamming here.
What was the configuration when we jammed earlier?
We were a small bunch with like sixteen big ones.
Okay.
Yeah. That makes sense. Oh, sorry. Six four suited. We get out of. Six three-oh. Oh, I feel like some chipper about to come my way. Raise it. And fold.
I think the ace six might have been a little loose. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, should we still be just three betting this in this configuration, or should we just rip it? Three equal stacks, basically?
Uh, I think we can do both. Ripping is fun too.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty. This is pretty much the situation. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, cool.
You get it through. I usually get the sensation of final tables, but I feel like they're playing very honestly. Interesting. That's a correct jam. I see that flop. Small turn. It's two different straight draws. Two different plus draws. We don't have much of any of it. This guy is pretty stabby. And this is not the hand that.
I think I was thinking about raising this river, but then decided against it.
I was thinking the same thing. Like blocking the net straight.
Yeah, we block, we block the straight on both ends. I was thinking about just like going for it. But.
Uh, it'd be pretty spicy. He's not really supposed to give you a lot of locks. Here we jams. Jack ten, uh.
I think the blocking straights on both ends is not enough when we're, when we're worried of diamonds and straights.
Uh, did we use a different open size before? Heads up? Or were you going three?
Yeah, I used different sizes.
Alright.
I have a limp, I have a two, two-point-five, and three.
What the hell? How do you, how do you keep your strategy straight?
It's, uh.
I would have no idea.
It's just different, uh, hand classes plus is dependent on the, their stacks.
Yeah. So. Alright, we pop up ace five-oh. Yeah, so he, he limped small blind, he checks back flop. When he has showdown, he has something super weak, like he has some deuces, some worse nines, some airballs. He can turn his king sometimes, right? Like, he can check back flop with like, like whatever, king five. Okay. It's like a little thin, I think, but I think it's fine. It's good. Hello. Is that how we did it? That's how we did it.
Yeah. So, just balancing the sizing here, like kings, uh, you definitely don't want to go three X, right?
Right, yeah.
Um, you want to make it as small and standard open size as possible, so min raise, um. But if you generally open two-point-five, just make it two-point-five.
Right, yep. Yeah, that's, that's exactly my strategy. Generally going two-point-five and deep, like two-point shallow. Nice.
Yeah.
Uh, amazing run, Vince. And like you said, you, uh, didn't have to get too lucky to get here. Mostly just outplayed these losers.
Yeah, I mean, um, just to be quite honest, like, in the Ontario pool, um, I think there are probably like maybe four players that I respect. Everyone else I don't.
Is Dooly one of them?
It's Dooly one of them.
Because it's like, honestly.
No comment.
High stakes, you're playing against the same people every day.
Yeah.
And like.
It's fun.
We saw earlier, the guy just, you know, called it off with ace three off somehow, you know? So, yeah, there's, there's definitely just like blasters, absolute blasters.
I've never gotten to, um, run the, the, uh, the click-in, so hope, uh, hope it wasn't too bad for you guys. Um, I know we went super late, so we ate dinner.
I think.
That was great.
And see you guys.
Thank you for roasting my hands, some of my hands. My river, my river spots are definitely like, needs work.
Um, I'll say, um, I, my, my like one takeaway out of everything would be, uh, barreling ace X. I think, I think it's like a spot where there's like some clear improvement. And like, I think a lot of other spots are like, okay, there's a good reason to do this or that. I think the barreling ace X is like one that, less so.
Yeah, there were definitely some spots where it's like, wait, what? Even when I'm watching it back, I'm like, what?
Except in the ace-nine hand, which was a, a barrel that was missed.
Tim, was that when you said barreling ace stacks? Do you, too much barreling ace X or not enough barreling ace X?
I think too much. He like mentioned a couple of times that like the, it was for value and the value target was two overcards and I think that's a little ambitious. Yeah.
Yeah, there's like. There's definitely a lot of loose passive players that just want to see cards.
Sure.
So. Like barreling the ace high a lot is just like to capture that value. So, that being said, I also give up a lot of rivers. Because they're like, they should not be arriving to the, to the river that often. So there's a lot of like nitty check backs.
Yeah, that's a joke. Alright, I'm gonna run to dinner. Um, see you guys on Wednesday.
Thank you. See ya.
See ya. I'm in the Discord. Thanks, Louis.